We're gonna get started now. It is Monday, November 25th, and this is a regular school board meeting. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Sorry, we'll do that after.
I can switch.
We did that last time.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Janet, could we do roll call? I'm sorry, we did it out of order.
Charles Blacklance?
Here.
Reed Campbell? Tom Hagland?
Here.
Sue Kern?
Here.
Ruth Nelson?
Here.
Bob Nystrom? Four of the six present.
Thank you, we have a quorum. We're gonna start with the approval of the agenda as amended.
Presented.
As presented.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a first from Director Hagland, a second from Director Nelson. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Then district recognitions.
Very good. I'd like to begin tonight by thanking the Forest View Middle School parents, teachers Beth Cooper, Tommy Andreessen, Brian Stark, and Robin Knudsen, and students Eric Makita and Marcel Wargaki, Rargoki, for helping to provide funds and work to complete the new addition to the school forest. This spot, which is located on the northwest corner of the fifth grade soccer field, now provides a great spot for fires with two fire pits, seating, and shelter for storing wood. Thank you, everyone, for your volunteerism to make that happen. And that's all I have tonight.
Alrighty, thank you. Next is the time where we have public input. Is there anybody who wanted to come before the board today? Okay, thank you. And we'll just move right on. Building project update.
Well, good evening. This is our bond improvements update for Wednesday, November 25th, 2019. On our agenda, we have wave one project updates. Specifically, we're gonna talk Brainerd High School, North Campus, give an update on the Mendolee Plumbing Plan Permit Review. Then wave two project updates as well, with Lowell Elementary Construction Documents being reviewed and Riverside Elementary Construction Documents being reviewed. So we'll start with the Brainerd High School. As you can see, we're starting to go vertical. We're coming out of the ground. We're gonna see a lot of change over the next few weeks. Steel erection is commencing in Area Three and One. Area Two auditorium footings are complete. Area Two exterior footings and foundations are continuing. Area Three, which is main level, Area D, we're doing some demolition. We're doing this to, for, it gives us the ability to tie in our structural steel to the existing building. Something that we needed to do. We had to move those kids over to South Campus, move those classrooms. So Scott's done a great job of facilitating that. Scott, if you wanna give us a quick update on our Mendolee Plumbing Plan Update, that'd be great.
Absolutely. Now, I used to speak with a microphone, so excuse me if I hold it too close or too far away. But just to continue on with what Damian had just mentioned, we did get into Area Three a little bit early. And kudos to the teaching staff and building grounds for being able to facilitate that move and getting the kids over across the South Campus. So that was awesome. We did so in a timely manner. We have construction crews going in there, demo's complete. We started putting our beams through the roof today. So without them, you know, getting that space ready for us, we wouldn't have been able to do that. So that's, that was hugely beneficial for the construction project. And then just backing up for the Mendolee Plumbing Plan Review update. So I did speak to our plan reviewer this morning. We have not received the official approval. And in speaking with her this morning, all indications would lead to we're going to get a further request for information, which just means that it hasn't been approved yet. They're seeking out more information to finalize their review. So at this point, it seems to be focused around the roofs and the roof drainage, specifically in the new areas. And until I get the plan review comment letter back, that's all the more information I have. Any questions?
We still have time, so that doesn't delay the project.
No, it's not gonna delay the project. All the work that was associated with that, we've pushed that into the summer of next year. So that was mainly tying into Fifth Street, specifically our firewater, stormwater, and sanitary sewer lines. So it just changed the phasing a little bit. But the Anderson Brothers has been great and working with us, and they're good with doing it next year. So it's not a big concern there. We will be putting, pre-installing a couple of storm structures just because with the steel structure going up, it's gonna cut off our access to the courtyard. So we do have to get those in. But we'll leave some leeway in there in case we have to make some fine-tune adjustments.
Wells Concrete is also immobilized to the site today. They're installing helical acres for, preparing for erection of the actual panels, which will begin after the holiday weekend here, so.
Yeah, Monday you'll start seeing the precast panels going up. So it'll be one of the larger structures in town, and it'll be very cool. So if you can take a detour by, I'd highly recommend it.
Are you guys taking pictures as you go along of all this?
We have been taking pictures, yes.
Good, because every time I go by, it looks so much neater than the day before.
Absolutely. It's really cool now because it's actually going up. So you can see something before it was just, when you drive by and it's just a bunch of dirt. Now you can actually see the structures and how it's gonna actually look. And you can start to get the feel of, you know, the spaces of the rooms. So it's pretty neat. On the ninth, when we do our tour, it'll be very cool.
Every school that I go to, the contractors are really excited about the nights of their tours and having it be a tip-top shape.
Absolutely.
For the public to see, so, good.
Yeah, it'll be really nice. There'll be precast panels and a bunch of structural steel up, so we'll be able to actually walk through and check out all the rooms.
Good, very good. Thank you.
Alright.
Thanks, Scott. New Baxter Elementary, we're working on vapor barrier and insulation, framing and sheathing on the cafeteria wing. We're roofing at the media core. Mechanical electrical roughens are being completed at the classroom wing. And we, I believe the roofing is completed or near completion on the classroom wing. So a lot of good work's been happening out there. The team's been doing a great job. There's a lot of roughens going in as well. So the classroom wing is kind of, is our critical path on the project. And so it's great to see the progress on that. We're definitely, that job is doing very well on the schedule. Weekly progress meetings onsite on Tuesdays at 11 o'clock. Does anybody have any questions about New Baxter Elementary? Okay. Nisswa Elementary, we're working on insulation and vapor barrier as well. It's a theme right now, that time of year. Interior framing and roughens are going on. Exterior masonry's been, is being installed in the classroom addition. Lot of good progress there, a lot of good contractors. Still a little behind schedule, but we still are working on picking up those days. So, but there's a lot of good engagement, good engagement with that project, so. We have weekly progress meetings onsite on Wednesdays at 2:00. Please come. I know Lynn just came last week. She was, got to see, got to see the crews onsite, so that was great. So, and I think you guys did an appreciation lunch today?
Today, yeah. Heidi and I both got to go up there, and the kids had pizza for all the contractors today. So it was a nice opportunity to say thank you. So for all the work that they're doing and remind everyone that we really want everybody to be safe in doing these projects and just to continue doing great work, so, yeah.
Awesome.
Great week with Thanksgiving to be thankful for all the work that everyone's doing for the district, so, yeah.
Yeah. Any questions on Nisswa? Forest View Middle School, not a lot of change. We're substantially complete, and we're waiting for metal panels to be installed over Christmas vacation, holiday break. We did do some brushing to accommodate the entries to the school, so there's better visibility for getting out in Oldwood, so, which is, which is good. Other than, not a lot of change.
Damian, one thing we might wanna talk about. Earlier, we had discussed a little bit about some of the floor coverings that need to be replaced at Forest View. Has anything been looked into as far as those? Or are they on a wait list, or?
So I have, I have the existing plans, and I'll get a rough order of magnitude to you. Just gotta put up some budgetary conceptual pricing. I'll get that in front of you. We wanna look at pursuing it, we certainly can. The thought was earlier that we maybe wait till this coming summer.
Okay.
It'd probably make the most, most sense to do that if we chose to take on that work.
Great. I guess I brought it up just 'cause I saw the screen, and with new people on, on some of our projects and such, and you included, that I wanna make sure that we don't forget about that because we know that there definitely is a need on that second floor in particular, so. Thank you. Thanks.
I have a quick question regarding Forest View. The southern parking lot, I think that's where the faculty and staff park during the day. The exit of that, which is over by the softball fields, the exit of that parking area. And when I enter it, I coach a few different teams for Brainerd. And when I come rolling on in about roughly five or 5:30 or whatnot, when a lot of the other people are coming out, one thing I've noticed is that, that entrance and exit to that parking area from the side street, which is also then becomes the bus parking area, it, it seems narrow. Whereas right now, even with, with dry concrete or pavement, I worry about, I have to slow down and turn really tight so as not to hit a person coming out of that same parking lot. And I have a concern that as it gets icier, if that, with even more traffic pressure coming in there, and not coming in from where it used to be able to come in from the horseshoe, so there wasn't quite as many people. But it seems pretty, pretty tight, pretty congested there.
Okay. Yeah, we can definitely take a look at that and, and see.
Yeah. 'Cause once in a while, like my pickup truck isn't even that big, but when I meet like a F-350 or whatever, then one has to kinda choose to go first, and then, then I can enter the parking, parking area. It just doesn't seem, I just worry if it gets icy.
Okay. Definitely address that concern. Take a look at it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Charles. Harrison Elementary, exterior brick facade is ongoing. Interior steel stud framing and roughens are happening at the administration suite and then at first and second level on the addition. Sheet rock mud and tape are complete in the kitchen. Interior stair one is being erected. The exterior brick on the north side is, is looking to get commenced. And roofing is ongoing. Weekly progress meetings onsite Thursdays at 11:00, 11:00 a.m. Things have been going well out there. We've got a lot of good momentum, so definitely, definitely, again, like I said before, right, the ship's been righted, and, and so Kyle and his team has been working really hard on that, so.
That's good.
Okay. Garfield Elementary, conditional use permit has been approved by the planning commission. There'll be a city council meeting in December to finalize. That went well. We have a pre-bid conference scheduled for December 2nd. And then our bid opening date is set for December 10th.
So 2:00 on the 10th?
2:00.
Exciting day.
Right?
Yeah.
Alright, and now Baxter Early Childhood, conditional use permit. We're working on surveying and replating. The application deadline is December 17th. City of Baxter's been very good to work with for us. I know Justin has said a lot of good things as far as how things have been going. We're preparing for bid solicitation in January, and we're doing that. That's, that project will be starting later in the summer, so we're strategically laying that one bid last. We also wanna have it go through planning commission in case there's anything we wanna, anything we wanna pick up that the city wants to require or add to the project, so. Alright, I'm gonna turn the mic over to Mark Needham and let him talk about Lowell Elementary.
Okay, Lowell Elementary. We're, we went for the conditional use permit last week, and it was approved by the planning commission. And we are getting ready to go out for bid here next week. I'm gonna go to the next page, and we'll start getting into some of the plan review and some of the documents and what we're looking at. So here on the, the lower level, can you hear me okay through this thing? The lower level, just a brief overview of what's anticipated here on this floor. There's classroom, or, excuse me, let me back up real quick. So there's two phases to this, I think that's important to talk about. There's the new addition, which is the gym and the entryway, and then the classroom tower, which is kind of the north side of the drawing that you see here on the screen. And then the remodel space for the south half, or the bottom half of the sheet here. So to orient us going through the lower level here, the remodel space, looking at classrooms, our art and science spaces all the way towards the left-hand side of the drawings. And then you can see that the, there's a, the new classroom tower kind of on the northern half or the top half of that drawing for lower level. Any questions about lower level layout or anything like that before we move on to the next floor? Okay. Here on the first floor, again, the remodel space, classroom layout and updates there. And then notably for the remodel, there's the kitchen and cafeteria space that is gonna go in there. And then towards the top half of the drawing, you'll see the gymnasium, the full-size, full-size gymnasium there, and the, again, the continuation of the classroom tower, as well as some administrative space and the new additions. Any questions on first floor? Okay, second floor. And second floor, the new addition there, again, on the half, or the top half of the drawing, and the lower half for the remodel space for the classroom updates and additions there. And kind of the smallest footprint out of the three floors, but any questions on that one? Okay? Going to the exterior, the exterior of the building, there is a parking lot that is going into the south, or on the south part of the, south part of the site, here planned right to add additional parking. And you can see on that one-way street, that's where the parent pickup drop-off is going to be. And then around the corner there, that's gonna be the bus pickup and drop-off. In addition to that, there's going to be new landscaping and entryway. That's what that, kind of the diagonal sidewalks are there, leading to the front of the building, and how you gain access to the new entryway of the building. Any questions about landscaping or site and civil or, or access or anything like that?
Has that been made, a one-way street now?
It is, yes.
And those angled sidewalks, that's for to meet ADA? Because there's quite a bit of elevation change between the, the city sidewalk and the building, so. So that's why those are there the way they are.
And this plan that you see before you tonight is the plan that we brought forward for the conditional use permit to the planning commission last week. So it would need full board approval yet from the city council, but it passed the planning commission, which, again, we wanna reiterate that we've had just some great collaboration with the city of Brainerd to regarding these conditional use permits, and we thank them for that partnership.
Agreed, yes. Alright, let's go onto the next page here. So included this rendering just to help kind of visualize the space. It's one thing to see it in 2D, but another thing to see it in 3D. So we're looking at the south facade there. You can see the branding pylon that's kind of been consistent across the school district and how we, you know, signify the entrance to the building. You can also see the new addition for the gym and the new addition for the classroom tower and some, some of the surrounding spaces that go with it. So just kind of to help bring all that together and see, see a little more, want a little more detail or understanding how it goes together. Any questions about Lowell and where we're at with that?
So the outdoor area for, I see the playground and then the basketball court. That whole area in between there is also outdoor open play area.
Yeah, so if, if you're talking directly behind the newly added gym and the, the classroom tower, yes, that's all gonna be grass and paved spaces, yep.
And the, the one drawings, you have the little rounded part there?
Mm-hmm.
And on that one, there isn't the rounded part?
Yeah, and so if there's any confusion about that, I apologize. So I wanted to show the building, 'cause it, it really helps bring it together. The site has adjusted a little bit since these renderings were done. You'll see that there's two entryways into the parking lot, and that's not consistent with the new, the newest layout, right? What I wanted to focus on was the blue branding pylon to really get a feel and sense for that. So Damian, if you go back one page, you can see this is the layout for the, the site more, more accurately represented.
What is going to, how is the, the old gym going to be used again?
That's gonna be the new cafeteria and kitchen.
Okay, so just those two things will be in there?
Right.
Won't be any space for any, anything else?
Yeah, it's gonna, so it's gonna be a full kitchen on the south side, and then the north side's gonna be the new cafeteria. So they're splitting, splitting it essentially right down the middle and then having space for both of those to function, or both of those spaces to function within it.
Thank you.
Okay, alright, let's talk schedule real quick. So the, the goal and plan is to solicit bids starting next week to give us plenty of time to involve the local market and get good feedback from them. The bid opening is scheduled for 12/19. And then, once we get to that point, then we'll get into the contract award and procurement phase where we get everybody signed up and work through detailed plans of how we'll move through the space. And then, starting in the, at the end of May, in 2020, that's when we'll get started with Phase One construction. So that, that being the new addition work, so foundations, precast, steel, a lot of the, kind of the, the more front-end type work that you'd see there. And that will continue into February. And then we'll start Phase Two construction, which is the renovation. So that'll be, you know, finish-up dates and interior spaces for the, the lower half of that drawing that I was showing earlier. So that's, that's when all, all of that work starts taking place. So demo and the refresh of those areas. With, excuse me, anticipated completion at, in August of 2021, end of August. Any questions on schedule or anything else with that project? Okay. So Riverside, that was approved by the planning commission in the same meeting as Lowell was. That happened last week. And we're preparing for bid solicitation in mid-December. Kind of a one-week offset from Lowell, so we're not inundating the market with too many bids to look at at one time. Get into the architectural plan review here. So on this page, the, the phases to kind of set up the organization of it, there's the new addition, which is the, gonna be the gym that you see kind of towards the top side of the page. And then there is a new service entrance that's going on towards the lower half or the bottom side of the page. Yeah, if you can point to it. Awesome. Nope. Nope. So if it, it's just, it's one hallway away from the gym. So those are the two main new additions that are going on to this building. And then the rest of the renovation is updates to interior spaces and finishes that go along with them. And we've organized this project into five different alternates. The first three are classroom updates, and, you know, including them in, in the plan if the budget allows. The fourth one is refinishing the gym. That's kind of the bottom left-hand side of the drawing that you can see up there now. And then the fifth one, we'll get in that a little more when we get into the site plan, but that's a mill and overlay for some asphalt in the, on the backside of the building. Any questions about this one? There's only one floor here, so this is only, the only floor plan that I have up there. I'm gonna go to the site plan. So site plan. Here we have some landscaping updates and, that we're making to the front of the building along with the removal of that entry canopy that's there now. It's this, the detached metal awning that's there. And that'll get replaced with the, the blue pylon, the branding piece that we've got to keep consistent across the district as well. And then if you look at the south half of the project, there's gonna be a mill and overlay for that parking lot that's to that, to that side of the building. And then one of the alternates that we're considering, or are going to consider is a mill and overlay of the, the asphalt that's gonna wrap around that edge of the building to kind of tie it all together into the new asphalt that's going where you see the basketball court now. So looking at, at this drawing too, on the right-hand side of the drawing, you can see the, the new addition for the gym kind of outlined in the darker, the heavier-weighted lining. And then towards the, just to the left of that, you can see the dark outline of the new service addition as well.
The entire Brainerd team will have a bird's eye view from our office on this project, so. Mark, the pressure will be on.
Yep. We'll be able to watch it all happen right from our window, so it's, we're located in a great spot. So here, just to kind of help bring it all together again, you can see the new addition towards the back. And then if you look directly to the left of that, you can see the new addition of the service space and how that's accessed. And then really beyond that, it's the basketball court in the background. Otherwise, not, there haven't, or there aren't any planned updates beyond, or excuse me, beyond the, the branding pylon and the removal of that canopy in front as well. So it's less involved with the exterior of this project than others.
So this might get, be getting really into the weeds, but I see the, the basketball court in the back. And the hoops, they look like they're removable or adjustable hoops? Is that what?
They, they have, they have foundations that'll keep them there, so they won't, they won't move.
Basketball court right here, yeah.
Collapsible rims. Maybe if you can lower it to seven feet, yeah.
Alright, let's look at the schedule for this one. Yep. Very similar schedule to Lowell on this project. So looking to solicit bids or start that process in the middle of December, so 12/16, and then open the bids, that date planned for the 9th of January at this time. From there, getting into contract award and procurement. So again, setting up, you know, all the contractors, getting everybody into their detailed scopes of work. And then once we get into Phase One, that work's starting at the end of May 2020. And then wrapping up just before the beginning of 2021, so December timeline there. And then Phase Two, the renovation for that, starting the following summer and then wrapping up by the end of the, or the, before the beginning of the school year there. Any questions? Go ahead.
I'm sorry, so, so the gym, so Phase One, that'll be the, that'll be the gymnasium?
Correct, yes.
So that'll be online?
It'll be.
December or probably Christmas?
Complete, but we won't be able to use it, if that's the question. At least looking ahead right now, 'cause there's still building tie-ins. We have to connect, you know, we've gotta connect exterior systems. We have to, we'll have to run finishes between the two spaces, 'cause they eventually will connect. But we'll have the core and the shell, so you'll have roofing and the interior finishes for that space will be mostly done, but you'd have to travel through construction spaces to get to it and be.
So it won't be usable for?
Correct.
Say, the students until?
Right.
When reference?
Right, yeah, right now, that's the plan.
When would it be usable for students? When would the plan be?
Uh, when, when we open Phase Two. So when Phase Two is complete, we'll turn the whole building over.
So it'll be, it'll be about life safety. It'll be fire protection, fire alarms.
Okay, thank you.
Those kinds of things. And we can still, we can look, we got some time to look at that as well. And, you know, if there's, if there's ways we can make concessions and make that happen, we'll, we'll definitely consider it, but.
Sure, thank you.
At this time in the planning process, we'll, we'll wait, we'll be, we'll be waiting till Phase Two's complete.
Understood.
So is bid opening day January 9th? Is that the date?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay. 2:00 here?
2:00. Any other questions?
I think we're good to go.
Okay.
Nice. Thank you so much.
Any other questions at all for us? Any other questions at all for us? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, the approval of the minutes from the regular school board meeting on November thirteenth. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second?
Thank you. We have a first from Director Nelson and a second from Director Haglin. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now the consent calendar.
Move to approve?
Second.
Thank you. We have a first from Director Haglin, a second from Director Blackland. Discussion?
I just have one thing that I wanted to suggest, and that is our, within our consent calendar, on the FMLA, since that's a mandatory approval, I would like to suggest that we don't include that in our board packet as far as the names and reasons behind, thinking it's more of a confidential information, employee information, and I don't really see a need to have to have it.
Okay.
In our, in our board packets.
Do you want anything in there as far as how many, or?
I personally don't need any of that, but if others do, it's, you know, by law, we've gotta, we have to approve anyway, so.
Sure.
I think leaving it up to our HR manager and.
Okay, her decision is fine then.
Would be my suggestion.
Good. Okay.
Yep, I agree.
Okay. Okay, we have a first and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Next up, our site reports. We have our student council update with Jenna Lee and Nolan Reynolds. Welcome.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Hi, I'm Jenna. I'm a senior. Right now, Student Council is planning Christmas ball, and we just got done writing Christmas cards for veterans, and we scare hunger, where we go around in the community and collect candy, or non-perishable goods for the food shelf.
That's great. When is Christmas ball?
December fourteenth.
Nice. I hope it's good weather.
Yeah, and that's, that's really all we have on the table right now for things we're kind of doing through Student Council, and then the class cabinets, I know, talked to them, and they're all doing their own new things this year, and prom is, we're looking at some changes this year. As far as grand march, not being at the high school, but rather at the MP Center along where prom is held. And then some differences where, along with prom, as far as planning, and it's usually up to the junior class cabinet to plan the prom, but this year, we kind of changed it around a little bit, so seniors could give their input on what they wanted to do for their senior prom. So, yeah.
Nice.
If, if the grand march is, is held at the MP Center, is, is there enough parking?
Yep, so we would, we would be, one of the reasons we'd be doing it is because we'd be looking at running a shuttle either way, due to construction at the high school and parking there. So we thought, instead of running a shuttle to the high school and then to the MP Center, it looks to be in our budget, we would be able to do it at the MP Center, and then we would still run a shuttle from a nearby location, like Hub Foods or Census or somewhere over there, to the MP Center, and so, and then we would still have parking, there'd be like a carpool incentive, like four more people would get parking at the MP Center. Yep.
Great, thank you.
That's a good idea.
Where are you having the Christmas ball this year?
Um, at Craig's, at the Cent Sports Center there.
Awesome.
That's awesome. Good location.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for your report. Next up, world's best workforce, Mr. Murtha.
Too many toys. Good evening, thank you. What this evening is, is the presentation of the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty World's Best Workforce Plan for Brainerd Public Schools. This plan is offered to fulfillment of Minnesota State Statute one twenty B eleven subdivision one. This constitutes the final statement of the data that was presented to you in September around the Continuous Improvement Retreat. The goals that we set that drive the Continuous Retreat are the same goals that we submit to the state as part of the plan. So what we're attempting to do is not just fulfill the intent of the, the letter of the legislation, but to make sure that we're leveraging this as a comprehensive, long-term planning structure to support and improve teaching and learning with the goal of producing the world's best workforce. It's intended to serve as the foundation of our continuous improvement process. So all that staff development work that we do, the identification of those pieces around common assessments, formative and summative, the RTI MTSS work, the social-emotional learning work, and the elementary running records work, these are all the actions we're taking to make the goals identified in the World's Best Workforce Plan achievable. So that's the, the short version of that. What the report asks us to do is identify the systems and structures of the district that we use in order to make sure that we have them and that we're leveraging them for students' good. So it comes down to five real clear goals. Kindergarten readiness, third-grade literacy, achievement gap closure, college and career readiness, high school graduation, and attendance. These are the elements that we track as indicators of success for the district. There's two I want to pull out and just address a little bit more specifically, the rest are fairly self-explanatory. The achievement gap closure goal. The goal that we chose, we have multiple achievement gaps, as you know, but we chose the special ed achievement gap because it's the largest achievement gap that we have, as contrasted with students in poverty, which is the largest population of students with an achievement gap. So that's why that one was chosen. For college and career readiness, we're currently using the, all four benchmarks of the ACT as our indicator for that. That at the moment is probably the best indicator we have, but this has been a kind of an ongoing conversation for the district, is what's the best way to identify this? The ACT and exams like that are really targeted at a particular audience that's going on to a four-year school. It does not completely encompass all the students going on to vocational, technical, community college, and a lot of training opportunities that are very much needed in the workforce and are very legitimate outcomes of an education. So there's work for us, room for us to work on that for there. Those are the two I wanted to pull out, just because they're ongoing conversations and involve us making some choices about that. Do you have questions about the World's Best Workforce Plan?
It doesn't look like it.
Because Melton and Campbell have, have heard all this many, many times now between here and DAC.
Tim, maybe at some point in time, it would be interesting, it's fun to see the, the goals from eighteen to nineteen, but even if we could have like a, you know, a five-year or so, maybe that's in here and I didn't see it, but, you know, looking back.
The data that you're looking for is present in the tables, starting on page four, but it wouldn't identify it as the goal. The, the things that we measure as the goal, read well by third grade, kindergarten readiness, we haven't changed those success measures, so if you pull that data out, certainly the data that's MCA data, it's in there, but I can give you a five-year history on that with no problem with the next board meeting. You would see some of that clearly articulated in the district achievement summary, which was submitted in September, that gives the multiple year and the multiple grade breakdowns of performance relative to the state accountability test, but I can be a little bit more specific and condense that data for you.
Do you have more, or?
Nope, I don't.
Oh, you're good, okay.
The format of the report has been the same for five years, so I think you've seen it before.
Well, thank you so much for, for your report. Very good.
And I think I'm up next for board policy as well.
Corey's in between.
Oh, Corey's in between, I'm sorry.
Yep.
I will lug it all back and lug it all back up in a minute.
Community education update, and Corey's right there.
Not violate the agenda.
So a lot of Reynoldses on one agenda. I taught him everything I know.
There are a lot of Reynoldses.
Yes. Short and sweet, and try not to blush too much. Good evening. I thought I'd just come tonight and give a little overview of the community education department. I've been here many times, sorry about that. Talking about different aspects, but I just talked a little bit about the entire umbrella of community ed, because I think people often don't realize the scope of all the programs we have running, so here we go. Here's just a little idea of everything that falls under that big old community ed umbrella. Lots of different programs. The whole idea, of course, is lifelong learning, so from practically pre-birth to beyond, we have something for, I like to say, every member of the family, so you can see that there. And I'll just go through these quickly. Here's just a little desktop snapshot view of our early childhood programs. You can see three hundred and forty-five children from those newest babies on up to three years, or actually, five years old, and their family members are served in our ECFE program that takes place over at the Brainerd Learning Center. It's a great program. I, one of the most frequent requests I get is, can we have ECFE programs for teenagers? Unfortunately, our ECFE funding can't be used that way, but I get the feeling, I understand. But parents appreciate, and I know when I participated myself, it was a great time to practice going to school for a little one, and also to be with other parents at that same life stage, so it's a great introduction to the school district as well. Two hundred and eighty-one students are involved in integrated school readiness preschool for ages three to five years old. We have four sites for that. You'll see the Learning Center, Washington, Baxter, and Nisswa. I should say, when I, when I say integrated, I mean special ed and regular ed. We have, most of our classrooms are integrated with both to give, really, just as a preparation for being in school. We conducted last year four hundred and ninety-four early childhood screenings. This is for children three years old to five years old. This is a required developmental check for students, or for children, really, and we also here in Brainerd use it as a way to register kids for kindergarten, so it's always very exciting for them to come in and get their hearing and their vision tested, and then do what seems to them to be fun little tasks, but really gives us a lot of information about how they're tracking developmentally. We do get a lot of referrals for kids to be checked out by special ed. Just, it's just a great sort of dipstick on how a student is doing, and then if there is a concern, we have lots of time before kindergarten to address that, so it's a great program, and parents seem to appreciate getting the feedback on how their children are doing. And then, see, I just threw together just a little idea of what the staff for that program looks like. We're serving upwards of five hundred students and their families. It does take a small dedicated army to, to do that. So that's our assistant community ed director, Toni Flowers, is there, we have a coordinator. The bodies add up to about two full-time secretaries to support the administrative functions of the building, fourteen certified teachers, nine paras, one PTO, and then, of course, that whole gamut of partners on the special ed side, too. It's a big staff, doing great work with, with our youngest learners. It's so fun to see them in the fall when they come in and they don't know how to use the scissors, and by the end of the year, they're just cutting like crazy. Sometimes their hair, but maybe that's just the Reynolds children. I don't know. I sort of put these in chronological order, so in my mind, the next step, once you sort of graduate out of early childhood and into, into big kids' school, elementary school, comes childcare. So this program, very familiar to many people, Fun and Friends, this is their thirty-first year serving, I'm sure at this point, it's gotta be tens of thousands of students who have gone through the program over the years. We start early in kindergarten and pre-K plus, serving, we have thirty-three students in our kinderclub program. Last year, that was all-day, everyday kindergarten prep childcare program, and then we also had forty students in our pre-K plus program, which is the wraparound, so that pairs with our school readiness classroom, they go to school readiness part of the day, and then kinderclub, pre-K plus for the other half of the day. And the, their kindergarten teachers tell us that's the best of both worlds. That's, that's when we see the most growth in students, when they're in that really great, high-quality programming all day long, and it serves families very well as well. Last year, we had just under six hundred students in grades K through four at Fun and Friends here in this building and up at the Nisswa Building for before and after-school care. On school days, this place is buzzing in the summertime, all summer long, there are kids on playgrounds and in the gym and in the cafeteria. Sixty-four students in middle school participate in the senior leaders programs, where they get leadership opportunities and then a safe place to be outside of school. The staff for this program is a coordinator, four lead supervisors, each with sort of their own part of the programming to take a lead on, six supervisors, sixty program assistants, three foster grandparents through the Lutheran Social Services Program, and then six youth volunteers. These would be senior leaders who have decided that they might have an interest in working at Fun and Friends when they're old enough, and so they start by volunteering with us. And those numbers are so loud at large because we are dealing with state-mandated ratio. We are a certified site to accept childcare assistance through the county, and so they are very strict about our student-to-staff ratios, which is the joy, you would imagine it to be in a tight labor market. So any teenagers you know, or college students, or recent graduates looking for a job, if they'd like to work with kids, Fun and Friends is a great place to work. Next then is our youth development program. These are really all our out-of-school time programs for K through twelfth graders that are not childcare, so kind of the other side of the coin. According to the state report, we, we submitted to MDE this year, we serve just under ten thousand students in programs like Driver's Education. That's probably our number-one program for especially high school students. Unified Warriors, another program that takes special needs students and pairs them with a regular education student, and they do social skill-building activities together. We run lots of youth sports, camps, things like that, really anything for any student outside of the season, that season, and in the summer, we would run a camp for that. And then lots of clubs and classes. I can't remember what baking club has been, culinary club has been doing lately, but I get to see the ingredients and sometimes see the final product when there's extras in the office, so. Exciting, exciting stuff.
So I take it students are counted multiple times in that?
Yes, sorry, thank you. Other than, I should say, all our numbers from here forward are turnstile numbers. So our best customers are our repeat customers, and at this point, we just don't have a great way to count unique individuals. So the staff here, we have a full-time coordinator, we have a coordinator, somebody who coordinates just the driver's ed piece, because there's lots of moving pieces with students who need their, the classroom work and the behind-the-wheel and all that. Two secretaries support this program. We have two enrichment facilitators, one at Harrison and one at Riverside, who work with our coordinator to put together activities at those specific schools. I know there's a little STEM club going at Riverside. I believe Garfield has had a military families club, other things like that, but we've found it's really effective to have somebody who works in that building during the day be willing to stay and do something with students after school. be willing to stay and do something with students after school. Okay, next up is our insight program. This is for adults with disabilities. And just under twenty-nine hundred adults participated in social activities that were customized for adults with cognitive and developmental disabilities. And what's so great about this program is students who have participated in our programs here in Brainerd very often come back to us through this program. So many of them will talk to us about having had our Transitions Plus or our Stars program teachers as their teachers. They typically have a connection to the district already, and it's fun to see them continue with that. We are one of the most successful programs like this that I've been a part of. And I'm biased, but my proof that I would point to is that if you should ever go out to Craigins on a night when there's an insight dance, which is the most well-attended activity that happens almost every month throughout the year out at Craigins, you will find people coming to that program from St. Cloud to all the way up to Walker, from Mora all the way to Edina, because there just aren't opportunities like that, a lot of them, so they come here. So I always think that's a testament to the quality of the programs we run. We have one part-time coordinator, our two secretaries support them, and then there are a little handful of volunteers who come and help with the activities that they do, who will dance and hand out cookies at the dances or whatever's needed. Our adult services program, you see here, we have a number of adults who are involved in enrichment activities and volunteer opportunities at the school. This is a really broad category, adult services, because it does encompass people who maybe came and made sushi one night, or learned to dance, or do yoga, and then who came and read to third graders, or helped hand out programs at the Veterans Day, things at the buildings. It also includes people who come to events where our facilities have been rented out to other groups, Lakes Area Music Festival, the basketball, or all the sports associations. You can see there are eighty-four such groups last year, and almost one hundred and ten thousand people came into the building. I was just speaking today at our advisory council meeting that I really like this number, and I like to see it be a really big number, because this is the one that says to me, if nothing else, people come to our buildings to watch their kids or grandkids in a concert or an athletics game. It's kind of that catch-all category that tells me really, community ed brings people who wouldn't otherwise come to our buildings to our buildings. We have an adult services coordinator and two, our same two secretaries, and our instructors here who help make these adult services happen. And these are separate, however, from the adult basic education program. These are adults who are working on obtaining a GED, maybe want to improve their Accuplacer score, that's the test, the college placement test, working on college readiness skills, and in an area that's growing rapidly, not just for K-12, but also for adult basic ed, English as a second language. Every time I hear Tim Murtha talk about our ESL student population, I immediately think about their family members at home who may need, have that same need for ESL services, and we provide that through adult basic education. The program is headquartered at CLC here in Brainerd. It's been a great partnership with the college. And we are also part of a consortium, or we are the host of a consortium for ABE, where we work with Pine River Bacchus, Pequot Lakes, and Crosby-Irington, excuse me, as well as Brainerd. And in a couple of those other districts, we have some satellite sites, different activities. In Crosby, we ran a class this summer for the para-pro test, so the test to become a para. It was a class to help people who typically have not been able to pass that test to get them the skills, not just to pass the test, but also to come into a school district and be ready to be an excellent para. And I understand Crosby-Irington has hired two or three paras from that class, so it's been successful. And we're working with Kathy Nault and her PTO to hopefully do some things at Harrison for their parent population that maybe have some needs in this area as well. You can see our staff here is a lead teacher, a full-time teacher, three part-time teachers, and one secretary. And then there are many more. These are just a couple of the other programs that don't quite fit into any other area. Baxter Parks and Rec, we're in a joint powers agreement with them, where community ed runs their Parks and Rec department for the cities, for the city of Baxter. Communications, both community ed communications and the district communications, we have a hand in that. And then health services, with our three district nurses and our nine building nurses, all part of the community. So all these people are working together. Again, a small army of people working to make, to realize our goal to make people's lives better. And we do that by focusing on these four main areas of excellent customer service, highly skilled staff, a visible public presence, and then reducing barriers to participation. That's community ed for you.
Looks like you got a lot going on there.
Yeah, that's why I'm losing my voice, I guess.
It's really amazing the growth over the last few years, with all the different activities, what's going on, the number of people that are impacted by you and the staff. Cory, are you connected at all with the Children's Museum? Are you dialed in?
In a couple of different ways, yeah. I know Toni Flowers with Early Childhood has been more involved than I have been, meaning she's been to a few more meetings than I've been to. But yes, we're aware of the plans, and we've separately spoken to them about how the school district could potentially interact, not just the school district, but families could interact with the Children's Museum.
I have a question, too. On our early childhood screenings, do we ever look at how those go up and down and see if they compare at all to our kindergarten numbers?
In what way?
Well, just if, as they go higher, higher, if there's any correlation, I guess I should say. Do you think there would be so?
Yeah, I mean, we certainly, that's sort of, if we don't, if a parent hasn't come to us for ECFE or special ed services or something, screening is really sort of our first contact as a district with them. So we certainly collect that information, and we start working it into our, into the appropriate kindergarten cohort, if that makes sense. But we, where our birth counts matter, and maybe this is more what you're asking, is an ECFE. We are actually, we have to, every year, submit to the state our birth counts for each age zero to five years old. So, yeah, we are aware of that. I send that information to Marcy, so she can be working it into her budget calculations if it fits. But, yeah, we keep an eye on those numbers, because they affect ECFE funding.
Because four ninety-four is a lot higher than what our kindergarten counts of them, so.
Yes. And that would be, that would be...
Three to five.
Those kids, yeah.
Yeah, but they only do it once, so over...
They only do it once.
Over a period of years, it should kind of be the average number.
I think it tracks pretty closely.
Do you know if they all come, I mean, they obviously don't, but when they come and be screened, they're in our district? We don't do it for other districts?
No, like, you can't, I don't think you can open enroll for screening. You would screen in the district that you live in. But you could, at some point between screening and actually going to kindergarten, open enroll to another place or move. We get screenings from other places.
We have open enrollments out of the district, and we have private schools and that kind of stuff. But it might be another data point to put into our...
It's definitely something we watch closely. We know we want to be around that five-hundred mark. That's what our census data tells. This is a cohort or a class of kindergartners. It's usually around five-hundred, and so that's what we shoot for.
Cory, I've had the wonderful opportunity to get to know a little bit more of and how community education operates throughout the Brainerd-Lakes area. And as a parent with young children and surrounded by a number of people with children, it's been so exciting to see how community education and all the different pieces underneath your umbrella just permeates all aspects of family life throughout the community. And I'm just so proud to see all of these pieces working throughout the community across the year. And just thank you for all you do and all your staff, and hopefully they can feel encouraged with how important they are to our community.
Thank you. I'll share that.
Thank you, Cory.
Next up, we have new business. We have seven action items. The first being the approval for the construction documents and to authorize the construction manager to solicit bids for Riverside. Is there a motion?
So moved.
A second.
Okay, we have a first from Director Blacklance, a second from Director Nelson. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Next up, the approval for the construction documents and to authorize the construction manager to solicit bids for the Lowell Elementary School.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. We have a first from Director Nelson, a second from Director Blacklance. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Next up, the approval for the annual board book subscription. Renewal for December fourteenth, twenty nineteen, to December fourteenth, twenty twenty, at the cost of twenty-one hundred dollars. Did you have anything to say?
We really don't. It's just to keep board book.
It's our usual thing.
Yeah, that's how we communicate with our public and the actions that are going to take place at each board meeting.
Have you noticed on a board book when you log in, now there's like an enhanced board book or something? There's two levels of board book?
There's like Board Book Classic and then the Enhanced version.
Oh, I didn't notice.
They've enhanced some of the features.
Okay.
I haven't gone in and used them.
Because I just do the classic. We can't do the enhanced.
I do as well.
That's all I've used.
One choice.
I only have one choice. It's because we don't live in town.
I don't know, but anyway, it might be something to look at.
To look into, to see if it's something that makes it easier even to use.
A move to approve as presented?
One second.
Thank you. We have a first from Director Hagland, a second from Director Blacklance. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And next up, the approval for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty Rural Minnesota SEP contract for twelve thousand dollars. And I believe we renew this every year, but the price tag is a little bit different. And so we need board approval.
We didn't know if there'd be any questions, but, yeah, it's for twelve thousand. It was twelve thousand last year. The previous year, it was less than that. They had went from three to five days. And Heidi can speak to the services that they provide.
So these are our career advisory counselors that are located at Brainerd High School. We now have two counselors that are working at Brainerd High School, working on career and college counseling. We partner with Rural Minsep, and we use our Sourcewell dollars as well. We use about fifty-five thousand dollars of our dollars allocated from Sourcewell to also fund those two positions to support our high school students.
Very good.
Okay, so the twelve thousand is what we pay them?
Yep, so we're contributing twelve thousand, and then Sourcewell's contributing additional fifty-five thousand to both of those staffs. When you talk about creative ways to make sure we're getting career exploration and college exploration in front of our students, that's how we're doing that.
And it's already included in our budget?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
What exactly do they do?
They meet with students, they take them through a variety of... There's different interest inventories, if you think about... Yep, career counseling, college counseling, different options like that. Job exploration, they do some partnerships. They connect with Bridges Academy. So an expansion of what our high school counselors are doing, but we reduced high school counselors. So this is a way to put that service back with our students.
So are they actually our employees, though?
No, they're not.
Strictly contracted, that we pay?
Yep, they're actually employees of Rural Minsep. And we, in this contract, we give them an agreement that we'll provide that office space, access to students.
So who supervises them?
Their staff from Rural Minsep. Andrew Ruska's really involved as well, as well as the guidance counselors at Brainerd High School.
So what kind of a degree do they have? Do they have a school counselor degree?
You know, I think it varies.
Just some kind of four-year degree?
Well, it's in that background of typically guidance counseling education. But again, they're coming through Rural Minsep.
Is it, is it the same two individuals that we've had for a while, or is there...
My understanding is we've had the consistency. In the past couple of years, we've expanded again.
And you had indicated the costume was different to the twelve thousand.
She said when she came up, it was twelve thousand last year, and again, it's twelve thousand this year. But before that, it was ten. I was wrong. I thought it was last year.
So again, we offset the cost with our dollars that we get allocated from Sourcewell. So this was an innovative funding project that came through Sourcewell. It's been quite a while ago, five or six years ago of how they could expand that career connection.
And it didn't come through the board previously, because it was under that ten thousand dollars, so.
And this is in addition to the guidance counselors that we have?
Correct, but we've reduced guidance counseling staff at the high school over the past few years. And what they've done is Andrea's tapped into, again, options that are available through Sourcewell to bring career counselors back in through Rural Minsep.
Is there a motion?
I'm motioned to approve the contract with Rural Minnesota SEP.
A second.
Thank you. We have a first from Director Blacklance, a second from Director Nelson. Any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Next up, the approval of resolution for the adoption of the ISD one eighty-one, World's Best Workforce Plan that Mr. Murtha presented to us.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. We have a first from Director Hagland, a second from Director Nelson. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying...
Tom Hagland?
Yes.
Sue Kern?
Yes.
Ruth Nelson?
Yes.
Charles Blacklance?
Said a yes?
Well, yes.
Did you have a question?
No, just catching up with the roll call vote.
Okay, I'm sorry. All right.
All in favor?
Thank you. And next up, the approval of the second and final reading of MSBA policies as listed here. I know you had questions last time, Ruth. Were they answered for you this time?
Yes, they made some changes. Thank you for doing that.
Need more cowbell. Excuse me, I will shut that off. All right, I'm sorry. The change that we wanted to point out in response to Director Nelson's request from the last board meetings in Board Policy six oh one concerning the inclusion of language that is standard between Policy six oh one and six oh three on the district obligations through screening of students who are not reading at grade level by grade three. There are two different statutes in play, one twenty-five A five-six subdivision one and one twenty B one-two subdivision two. One policy is really directed towards one, one policy is directed towards the other, even though essentially they want the same thing. So we took the most comprehensive language out of Policy six oh three and duplicated it in Policy six oh one. So the message that any staff member would get, if they were to look up policy in terms of what they're supposed to do, they would see the same obligation. One is, deals with, you have to screen for mandatory... One is, deals with, you have to screen for mandatory summer school. Others is you have to screen for any student not reading at grade level by third grade. If they're not reading at grade level by third grade, they're probably a candidate for summer school or vice versa. You know, so there's just some overlap in those policies there. So we've standardized that language. That was the only change that we brought forth since last month to any of the policies.
Just one other question on that. I, I know you got the language from the Minnesota School Boards Association. Do you let them know that there's some inconsistency in their language or?
Um, no, I, we, we can reach back to them. This is probably the case where two different lawyers working for the same company looked at two different statutes and wrote two, and wrote two different policies.
Just nice to have consistent.
It is. I, I think their assumption is that whoever's in charge of policy has a comprehensive understanding of that. Because this is actually raised again in Policy six-two-three as a cross-referenced policy and it shows up as such. But our language is consistent. We're good.
And it's included in our read-al-by-third grade.
Right. You've seen the dyslexia plan. Mrs. Bjorgi presented it in June as part of the read-al plan.
Okay, I'll move approval of all of those policies. Do you want me to?
I think we can read them off the sheet.
Policy four-one-four, four-one-nine, four-twenty-four, five-thirty-two, six-oh-one, six-oh-three, six-eleven, six-fifteen, six-twenty-three. And I'm motion for the approval of the second and final reading of those policies.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. Okay, we have a first from Director Nelson, a second from Director Blacklance. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, next up, the approval of the benefits package for the school board members as presented. You have that in front of you.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a first from Director Hagland, a second from Director Nelson. Any further discussion?
Yeah, a few thoughts on that. This is a little, this is a little different than, than, I'll admit, this is a bit of a surprise what's, what's before me today. In terms of what I was understanding was more of a, at least a potential working document. The second thing is that, I'll, I'll be very, very honest that when I ran for school board over the number of years that I have, I did so without, without the understanding of any type of benefit I would receive from that. I, I struggle in a mighty way receiving any type of benefit in a position that, that I ran for simply to serve our community and to serve our students. Especially at the potential risk or expense of teachers or activities or opportunities for our children. An example that I have is my daughter participates in, in Math Masters and had the opportunity to participate in Math Masters this past year. And it's a great opportunity. Won't unpack what that is. But the bottom line is not everybody that may have been eligible or had the, had the ability to participate in Math Masters were able to, my understanding, due to certain cutbacks or, or dollars in the end. Not all students were allowed or given that opportunity. I have a hard time taking any type of benefit as a board member that in any way down the road or currently could take away an opportunity from a child in our school district. Again, I, I did not run for school board to receive any type of benefit. I understand that that may have been the way in, in the past. But I'd love for the board to reconsider this or to even table this until we can have the members of the full board have, have a full and robust, robust discussion of this. Just finally, it's hard for me to, to move on this particular agenda item knowing that, that a student may be deprived of any type of opportunity.
Okay, I wanted to read a statement here that Bob Neistron wrote. He sent it. He couldn't be here tonight. He goes, "Dear Superintendent Larson and fellow board members, I first want to apologize for not being able to attend tonight's meeting. I have to attend to a medical issue within my family and have to be out of town. I want you to know that I support this change in our benefits and would have voted for it if I had been at the meeting. I believe that we need to support this change as it will help the district to save money. It also communicates to our employee groups that we are willing to take a cut in compensation for the betterment of the district. Our current stipend of three hundred and fifty dollars per month has not been changed in thirty-three years. And with this cut in benefits, it will help the district to further achieve its financial goals. I encourage the board to support this change in benefits with a yes vote tonight. Warm regards, Bob." Reed didn't have an opportunity to comment.
I guess my, my position on the board and, and still learning the process, and so my apologies, is I, I would, I'm really curious in terms of the process here. I would really urge the board to consider a third option, which is where we would just receive a compensation of a, of the stipend, but not compensation of any type of health benefit or dental benefit. And I'm not sure of the process and how, and which we, we move that way.
Okay. And I think Director Blacklance sets the direction we're moving. We just are taking our time so that we don't hurt any board member that currently relies on that health insurance so they have time to find other health insurance.
And I completely understand and respect that. I'm a new board member. So again, like I mentioned, I, I didn't, I didn't expect that. And, but I don't, and all due respect, I don't think we provide that same opportunity for students or faculty if we have to be faced with, with potent, or future cuts. Or like referring back to Math Masters where some students simply didn't have that opportunity this past year. That's a struggle that, that it's hard to me to move off of that, that spot.
I don't believe that there were any board members that realized there were benefits. I didn't even realize there was a stipend when I ran. So. At any rate, we have a first and a second, so we'll just go ahead and vote on that if there's no other discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so then the motion fails and so we'll just
Motion passes with the three to one.
Okay, I didn't know you could with, I thought you'd have to have four.
No, you have a quorum of your group.
We have a quorum of fours, okay.
You have a quorum here today. So three of two one is a pass.
Okay, I don't think I've ever been here when it was only four people here. Okay, motion passes then. Moving on here, the informational section of our meeting, curriculum report. Mr. Murtha, did you have anything else you wanted to share tonight? Nothing further, thank you. Business services report. Marcy, I know you had some numbers to share.
So you have two financial reports in your packet tonight. One of them is actually June, so we didn't report on June's because we were closing and we finally got that done. The audit is done. So a couple of things just to note on there. Overall, compared to the budget, eighteen nineteen, we were one point two-nine percent difference from budget, under budget. So that was good. You guys will see in the upcoming meetings when the audit gets presented that we came in better than what we had projected, which is even better. And there's nothing really else to note on there unless you have questions on June. Okay. The other report is the October report. And as always, I exclude, you know, the funds that are inconsistent with prior years. So I took out the construction fund and the debt service fund. And in eighteen nineteen, we were at about twenty-one point two-four percent. And this year we're at twenty-one point seven-nine, so a little, about a half percent difference. So that's good. We're tracking normal. Nothing else really to note on there unless you guys had any questions on that. All right, that's all I have.
All right, thank you, Marcy.
Thank you.
Okay, superintendent's report.
That's all right. I just want to begin tonight by updating you on a few things. One is that we definitely are at the point in our building project where we are doing furniture inventories. And I know the team of people here from ICS along with Woods, H. Smith, Nolting and so on have been going to every one of the buildings that are currently looking at their furniture, their fixtures and their equipment and doing an inventory of where we are and the needs are moving forward. So that we're sure that we have the equipment that we're going to need to staff each of the buildings as, as they get finalized. Again, I want to reiterate that we are doing an inventory of what we have because we are going to use what we have to start. And then what the plan is, is that as far as FFA needs, Damian is really putting it in a, a big bucket. And we're going to prioritize the highest needs as they go and have some standardization across the, the district. And so I thank Reed and I thank Damian and, and all the project managers for the work that you're doing. Because I know you're putting an extensive amount of hours with the principals. So thank you to the principals as well for, and the staff for letting you come into the classrooms and, and do that work. Also, we're doing some work right now with looking at the Performing Arts Center. And Cory and I are meeting the next couple of weeks to, to look at, she's done just an extensive amount of work on that. And we hope to pull together some ideas to bring forward to the board very soon to look at it. A little bit ago, I talked about that we met with the Brainerd City Planning Commission. And I, I said this already, but I really do want to reiterate that all of the, the communities, whether it's the Brainerd City Council and Planning Commission, the Baxter City Council, Planning Commission or NISWA, everyone has just been so wonderful to work with throughout this process. And I'm sure we'll continue that collaborative spirit as we move forward to provide the best facilities that we possibly can and surrounding areas. So it's been a pleasure to work with all of those groups. I also want to take just a couple of minutes today to, to recognize a few things that have happened in the, in the district. I want to thank Director Blacklance and Ashley Ingabritson and Director Kern as well for the wonderful powwow that took place at CLC about a week and a half ago. And just the beautiful dedication that they had towards the college and towards K-12 at Brainerd Public Schools. It was really heartwarming to walk around, to do, to be dancing around the gymnasium and have all these people recognizing the education and the hard work that all of our teachers and our staff do each and every day on behalf of our children and our community. And I say thank you to that. And I also want to say thank you that when you looked up in the audience this year, there were so many staff members that came. Heidi, I know you and I both said that as we participated in it, how heartfelt that was to have so many people there supporting our school. And so thank you for that. Also, the other night, many of us had the opportunity to attend the chamber dinner to look at the incredible businesses that we have in our community, the work that everybody does together, the new businesses that are coming to downtown Brainerd. And it's just so heartfelt to see how things just continue to grow and get better and better and better. And it seems like at a point we're the best we can be, but it seems like we just keep getting better and better. And so it's very, very fun. With that, all of the dates and such are identified in the board meeting, in the agenda and so on. And I can let our chairperson talk about those a little bit. But I know on behalf of the entire school district, we just, and the Board of Education, we just want to wish everyone a very happy Thanksgiving. And just, we are so thankful for the wonderful education and the many educators and administrators and board members and everybody for the work that's done to provide the highest quality education possible. So happy Thanksgiving. That's my report.
Thank you. I just want to echo the happy Thanksgiving. Comment my pastor made Sunday was, don't look at what you don't have, but instead be thankful for what you do have. So with that, enjoy your families and dinner and what you do together with them. The district offices will be closed on the twenty-eighth and the twenty-ninth. We'll have some tours on December second, Project Oversight December third, another tour on the ninth, as well as our Truth in Taxation on December ninth at six P.M. in our regular school board meeting. Then our bid openings will start after that. And we are going to go into closed session. Closed pursuant to Minnesota statutes thirteen D point zero-three for labor negotiation strategy. We need a motion.
I'm motion to move into closed session.
Thank you.